Should I make my announcement when the meeting starts, or can I make it now?
Uh, we're not live yet.
No? Okay.
What?
I can't make it?
Making an announcement.
Well, I'm gonna make an announcement too then.
It's not a competition.
Well, I'm gonna...
I'll go first.
You can't make it. All right, it's six thirty. Six thirty PM will call this meeting of the Leconia Planning Board to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Uh, David Barton?
Here.
Brett Bellavon?
Here.
Charlie Sinclair?
Here.
Edwin Bonas?
I'm here.
Claudia Martin?
Here.
And...
Hi. That wasn't the FEMA alarm, I hope. All right, it looks like we have a quorum and everyone's seated this evening. Staff in attendance? Acceptance of minutes from the previous meetings? Anybody have any...
Make a motion we accept it as written.
Oh, all right. Any discussion on that? Any second on that motion?
A second, Matt.
Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Meetings art. Minutes are accepted. I gotta take these off. All right. Do we have any presentations this evening? No? Then we'll move right into the most exciting part of the agenda. Extensions. Looks like the first one is PL twenty fourteen dash zero one one five CUP. It's a wetlands conditional use permit. Sixty-one Pendleton Road, Beechwood Lot Eight Extension Request. And this is the second extension request for this application. Applicant here?
Chairman? Planning Board members, Steve Smith. Steve Smith and his associates representing Mr. Remington. This is a lot in a cluster subdivision that was done a number of years ago. And at the time, the lots were approved. The wetlands buffer was thirty feet. It got changed to fifty feet, made Lot Eight within our cluster subdivision non-buildable. We came in primarily to get a conditional use permit because they're trying to market the lot and they couldn't market it if it was non-buildable. And they are still in the process of doing that. The Conservation Commission, we've came to the planning board. We requested to be able to maintain the thirty-foot buffer instead of the fifty, based on the original approval. That was approved as a conditional use permit. And we would request a year extension. We're still trying to market the property. Had some interest, but hasn't sold yet.
Okay. Will the extension have any impact whatsoever on a butters?
Not that I'm aware of. This is an interior lot within the cluster development.
Okay. All right. All right. Any questions about it from the board? All right. How should we proceed this evening? Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'm just curious if staff has any issues.
No, this is fine with us. It's there. We've talked with the developer a couple of different times and they're doing everything they need to do to move this along. It just hasn't happened yet.
Yep, okay. All right. Who do you think? Shall we grant Mr. Smith's client this extension?
Sure.
Take a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we grant an extension for PL twenty fourteen dash zero one one five CUP. Wetlands extended for an additional year until November of twenty nineteen.
All right, motion by Mr. Bonas. Second? Second, aye, Mr. Sinclair. Any discussion on the motion? Further discussion? Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, as always. All right. The next item is also an extension request, PL twenty seventeen dash zero zero eight eight SP. And the site plan, and zero zero eight nine CUP, wetland buffer. Sounds familiar. This is twelve twelve Union Avenue. Extension request. It's the first request for this application. We'll hear from the applicant.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. Tim Leclair, top four shores. We just requested an extension. We missed that deadline. We got a slower start and... That's it.
Boy, that's directed to the point.
We did.
Staff, what do you think of this?
We're moving forward now, but...
Unprecedented request.
Uh, no, it's not unprecedented. There has been some activity out there and they've had a couple of little technical snafus on their end, which has delayed the meaningful construction. But as you go by, you'll notice they have stripped the old pavement and they've done a little bit of utility work and they're ready to go very, very quickly here. So this extension is perfectly reasonable.
Yeah, and if anybody thought they could get it done in early fall without rain, they were mistaken, so...
Early?
All right. Any questions from the board? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the wetlands buffer, PL two oh one seven dash zero zero eight eight SP. With no conditions from the... From them, no?
No, I don't think there were.
No conditions, right?
No conditions.
No additional ones.
Yep.
Okay. All right, motion by Mr. Broton. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, second. Any discussion on the motion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Another unanimous request. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
A longer construction season and more money next year.
I actually have a two checks for the registry that's...
Okay. The checks, the checks, checks, what checks?
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Yeah, you gotta like it when they show up with money. That's good. All right. Zero six, it's another extension. Zero six, zero one zero SU and zero six zero zero seven CUP. And zero six zero zero eight CUP. It's manufactured housing park, Route one oh seven and Old Prescott Hill, Lilac Valley Development. And this is the ninth extension. It says here. So I'd love to hear from the applicant on that.
Uh, good evening. Sorry, I got a cold, so my voice is a little messed up. It is the ninth request, but if you remember, this property was part of the properties that were seized by the CLNM bankruptcy. So the first, like, four extension requests were just because it was undevelopable. Where we're at right now is we... The original road was built by the prior owner. Brady Sullivan has built the second road, which is Mark Drive. We actually pulled building permits this fall and just ran out of time to get the first buildings in. We've been working with Dean on, like, the number of buildings that we need to get in in Phase Two. And we're on the verge of being completely vested for the whole project and not having to come back to you. So I anticipate this is the last time we're gonna come to you during the year. Next year, we're gonna build, you know, ten, twelve houses, something like that, and that'll vest the entire project, so... And we already have the building permits pulled.
All right. Again, God willing, and the creek don't rise, right?
Yes.
Does the staff have recommendations on this?
No, everything John just said is an accurate representation and our anticipation is that this will be the last extension request.
Would the extension have any adverse impact, as you can tell?
No.
All right. All right, then. Are there any questions for the applicant? Anyone like to make a motion? Lilac Valley? What a pretty name, by the way, John.
What's that?
Such a pretty name, too.
Sure.
Sounds like a Rochester Place name, actually.
That actually was...
Lilac City, Lilac.
I'll make a motion that we accept the extension, the ninth extension, for this zero six dash zero one zero SU, wetlands, a manufacturing housing park on Route one oh seven and Old Prescott Hill, Lilac Valley.
Second. And second, then, Mr. Sinclair. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And another unanimous vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted...
What, no checks?
No more extensions. What I wanted to say was that I didn't know when to stick in is I have to leave for a delegation meeting, which is unfortunately at seven o'clock tonight.
Yeah?
So I just want... That's when we get up and leave in like five minutes.
When are you gonna be chair of the delegation so you can decide when?
Well, I can only hope that... They seem to have a knack of doing that.
Yeah.
Truly, so...
So, well, all right, then we have you while we have you and we'll make you work as hard as we can.
That's where I've gone to. And if it gets done quick, which I'm sure won't, but if it does, I'll come right back here. Promise.
And we still have a quorum even if he leaves, correct?
Right. Well, like we said, Mr. Bonas is a quorum.
I'm going with Charlie.
Yeah. I just go with Charlie, that's it. All right. It looks like, is this a continued number eight? Is that a continued public hearing?
Yes, it is.
All right, so that's PL twenty eighteen, zero zero seven five CUP, Woodvale Avenue. This is a proposal to level the lot with fill within the fifty-foot wetland buffer. The application was continued from October second. Get that one up here. Holmesy? Okay. We hear from the applicant? Mr. Holmesy?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I believe this has been continued a couple of times and there's some conditions, recommendations from the staff, and we've agreed to them. The only thing I don't think we can make is the December fifth deadline this year to put in the vegetation out front. Considering the frost and the cold, it's extreme cold that's coming in, I think all the material I put in is probably gonna die and not be able to grab. So I'd like to have till, you know, May first or something. We'll do it early spring.
Okay.
You know, we'll do it probably during the month of April. But if I can have till May first to put the vegetation across the front. We're good with the rest of this, recommendations from the staff. And Dean and I have spoken a few times. Everything seems to be pretty much agreed upon.
Okay. Good night. Staff?
Not yet. Need to open the public hearing.
Oh, that's right. Can't even see my... Six forty-two and open the public hearing on this application. Is there any butters here that would like to be heard? Any butters? This is Woodvale Drive, right?
Correct.
Woodvale Drive. Any members of the public that wish to be heard on the Woodvale Drive application? Any members of the public? All right, appears that the public hearing is gonna be incredibly short this evening, Mr. Holmesy. Six minutes? Lasted about one minute, so six forty-three. Now, Mr. Treth, then would you take the floor, please?
You have our... Under the staff recommendations, you have the outline of justification for the conditional use permit and then the conditions that we have approved. I have no problem with the May first. I would even suggest May fifteenth, just to be sure that regardless of what happens in the weather in the spring, that there's time to do this. But that's the board's decision to do. I do wanna draw your attention. I believe you have a copy of the email that was forwarded that's from Brian Bailey. His company is the company that did the wetland demarcation. It's short and sweet, but the question was asked at the last meeting as to whether we thought the proposal for the drainage system was going to work. And at that time, we had not assessed that.
Right.
So with Mr. Bailey's input and then we've discussed this with our friends at DPW, we feel that this proposal will be adequate to handle the drainage on that combined lot.
Okay. And is that... With that caveat, is that consistent with the recommendation from... Oh, actually, the Conservation folks were recommending that it not be approved.
Yes, they did.
Is... Did the changes that were made address those concerns?
They did review the plan after that was proposed. They still feel, basically, two things. They think it's a little close to the actual wetland and it's... They are concerned about setting a precedent, which I understand the concern, but my response to that is that both this board and the Conservation Commission should take each lot and each application on its own merits. And while you may approve filling to ten feet to... You know, through the wetlands, through the buffer, sorry. You may not do that on another application because it'll be a different situation. So I'm not concerned about setting precedent, but they are still concerned about the project overall.
I'm not certainly an expert in land use law, but the actions of a land use board wouldn't be binding on any other application.
Conservation Commission is strictly advisory to the planning board for these kinds of things.
It could be dispositive regarding future applications from... Regarding this parcel, though, right? I mean, what we do tonight will have an impact down the road should the owners decide they wanna try something different.
Oh, yes, if the...
It'll run with the land.
It will run with the land, but one of the conditions is that anything further on this property will require additional CUPs 'cause virtually the eighty-five percent of the lot is within the buffer. The usable part of the lot that where you would likely put driveway and/or some type of a structure is completely within the buffer. This CUP does not release the property from the requirements of the buffer. You're just allowing the current plan to be done and anything further would require additional CUP.
And the December fifth date, is that... Was that the completion date or the security date for landscaping?
That was gonna be both.
He wouldn't... It wouldn't make sense for him to do the security until he's actually done the...
Correct.
Planting, so...
Correct.
So...
We can do both at...
Is May fifth?
May fifteenth or May first, whatever the board decides. Either one's fine with me, but...
Okay. Uh, what was that, any other questions? Oh. At the public hearing last time, I recall one of the butters directly across the street was concerned about, you know, his view of the lot. Is there anything that you can do for that? I mean, you've got storage containers out there and...
Well, we've got two sheds out there that are wooden, you know, shed material, which we didn't need permits for, I guess, from what I understood.
No, you don't.
With Dean's permission, Dean's recommendation, we're gonna put some vegetation across the front. So it'll close in a lot of that, but again, it won't happen till the spring.
So we just... The neighbors will just have to wait for really deep snow this winter.
Well, not even that. We're gonna be doing some movement of the trailers in the next couple of weeks to get some stuff out of there.
Yeah.
So we're gonna... But there's only a few things there and most of it'll be covered up along the left side with the vegetation that comes in in the spring, but...
Yeah, I see.
I mean, if I can get it in now, I'm all for it. I have no problem doing it. I just don't want the... I don't wanna guarantee that I can do it by December fifth and have the stuff die. Some stuff, if I can get stuff that will grab now, that will not... The frost won't bother, whatever, I'll plant it. I have no problem with that.
I'm not suggesting that you have to rush the landscape.
No, no.
Just hopeful that you'll keep in mind that they were used to seeing it as an undeveloped wild lot and now it's not. And it's a transitional thing, I think.
Correct.
Right.
Right, right.
So it sounds like you've met the concerns to the staff satisfaction, so did you really have to leave exactly?
No. I have been trying to work with the staff and I think I've done everything that I can do and I'm willing to go full circle, so...
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Will this land as the plan to be used for storage and that's it for the future? Or is it just coincidence right now?
This is a transitional... We don't know what we're gonna do. I have a business partner in this and he's constantly flying and his business takes him all over the country. So he's not here tonight. He's in New Jersey. But we're not really sure. We actually live in the neighborhood, both of us, and we took... We wanted to take two lots that were part of a subdivision, approved lots with no restrictions, back in nineteen seventy-two, and we wanted to make them continue to be buildable. Well, now that the wetlands has generated a buffer, over the years, they've changed it a couple of times. Now they're unbuildable lots, which isn't hundred percent fair and reasonable based on the fact that they were on the day. So we're gonna do some cleanup. We already did some cleanup. We took some trees down. But we're gonna do some more cleanup before even the winter comes, just to give it some more curb appeal. So... And the only neighbor that was here in opposition is the one directly across the street. And if I had known he had any concerns, which I didn't know, I would've addressed him before that night and just make sure that we're... Because we're on a friendly basis, it's not an issue, so...
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, and I don't think that they were angry or anything.
No.
Just concerned.
No, concerned.
Absolutely get that.
Justifiably so, I'm good with that.
The neighborhood where I grew up in, I used to play in the woods all, you know, in the background. We could go all the way to the Guilford Line and now it's a development, so...
Right.
You know, it's a shock to the system.
Oh, I understand.
Are there any other questions for the... Yes, Mr. Brown? Dean, what is considered planted vegetation?
We're gonna have Mr. Holmesy work with our Conservation Technician to come up with a list of plantings. Conservation Commission has a list of plantings that they would normally recommend for these kinds of situations. It'll be something that will provide some screening, but at the same time, be hardy enough to survive in the environment.
And you're okay with that?
Yeah. Yeah, no problem. Yeah. I don't know, I gotta check with Public Works, see if they use any salt on that street because a lot of people wanna plant arbovites, which are hardy and they're good block, good view block and stuff with... But they don't handle the salt. So we'll look, we'll work together with them and figure something out.
They grow fast, but they don't like...
The salt just rips them up. They die in months, so... Great plant, but the salt just ruins it.
Deer love to eat them.
Yeah, the deer love to eat them, yeah.
Yeah.
They'll work together, no problem.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Holmesy? All right. Sensing none, I will entertain the motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the extension till May fifteenth, twenty nineteen, for PL...
Excuse me, it's not an extension, actually. It's an application.
I'm sorry.
Right?
It's the approval, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I don't wanna...
I'm new at it.
It's their first one, so we're gonna walk through this.
Welcome, then.
Thanks.
Okay, welcome.
So a motion for the application?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Motion to approve the application.
To approve the application for May fifteenth, twenty nineteen, for PL two zero one eight dash zero zero seven five CUP, Woodvale Ave.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, and there are some conditions, I believe?
Hold on.
Could I interject for a minute, please? It's actually Woodvale Drive. And Woodvale Ave has been mentioned a couple of times tonight. It's Woodvale Drive. It's been mentioned as road in the past. It's been mentioned now tonight, Ave, so just so we're clear.
It's a typo on our...
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, on this...
For all I know, there could be a Woodvale Ave down the street, I don't know.
Am I correct that it's for Woodvale Drive?
And that is correct on the staff review report?
Yeah.
So...
This report is...
If you wanna...
Okay.
Buddy, if you wanna go to this, the conditions are all laid out.
Oh, okay.
On the staff review.
You could just say include the staff recommendations.
And to include the staff recommendations? All right. Sorry.
Oh, that works?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. You don't have to do what Bones does all the time. We used to do it in the old day, you know?
I don't.
He's humoring me now, you can tell. All right.
He did it once.
Thank you, Dean.
Everybody follows suit.
Okay. Well, it's good with...
David Bones loved it. It was simple.
I'm good with brevity, thank you.
Without being humid, nothing works, right?
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Sensing no further discussion. All those in favor of granting the application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's another unanimous vote.
You guys are on a roll tonight.
We are, indeed. And we thank you for that.
Absolutely, safe ride.
Thank you for that.
And thank you. Enjoy your holiday week coming up, okay?
Here, Mr. Holmesy. Maybe they could decorate the trailers with Christmas lights or something. Neighbors would like that. Don't quote him. All right. Let me go back here. This button, this round, that's the back button, right, on this thing? I don't know. Oh, no, there's an arrow. Right. Humor me. All right, we are at... We're gonna be switching between the paper nine. Point...
Public hearing.
One. Okay, so now we have public hearings. We have a public hearing scheduled on PL twenty eighteen dash zero zero eight nine, conditional use permit, once again, a wetland buffer. This is Trail Haven, which is Barbara Boulevard. It's a proposal to allow construction in the fifty to thirty-foot buffer in accordance with the original approval from two thousand and three. Sounds familiar? Let me open that up. And we will hear from the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Tim Burnier, TF Burnier Incorporated. We prepared the plans for the applicant. This is a cluster subdivision that was approved in two thousand and four under the old thirty-foot wetland buffer, which has since changed to fifty. It involved, it's an extension of Barbara Boulevard. It was approved as two phases, Trail Haven South and Trail Haven North. Trail Haven South is built out. Trail Haven North was nine lots, two have been completed and seven remain. There was quite a bit of infrastructure installed. Barbara Boulevard was extended several hundred feet. Fire cistern was installed, quite a bit of expense and, and onsite improvements was put in. And the project kinda sat for a while because of the market. The market's kind of turned around a little bit and looking to complete the development and they, I was hired to update the septic designs for these lots and went through the town's regulations and gave the city a call and said, "What's up with the change in the, in the wetland buffer setback?" And so that telephone conversation brought us to here. We have met with the Conservation Commission a couple of times. And we, we did take a look and took sort of their, their input, the Conservation Commission, and took a look at the lots and it worked with the developer. The houses are a little bit smaller than they were in the original approval. But the lots, the building lots themselves, because this was a cluster, so there's a lot of open space, but there was a very defined envelope for each building. Gave us very little room to move those buildings around. But we did the best we could to get all of the buildings out of the fifty foot wetland buffer. But then obviously, a little bit of grading around the house, we're gonna be in it. So we were able to, we have little impacts, like a well and a little bit of grading here and there that crosses over the fifty foot setback. But we were able to preserve a lot of it. We just have a few spots we just couldn't.
What do you have for soils there?
The soils are actually pretty good in the, in the developed, in the areas proposed for development. There are a lot of wetlands on the property. This is a, this is a, this is a piece of property that's been through the wringer, to say the, to say the least. There were old roads that had proposed back in the fifties that were partially constructed without any drainage. Created a lot of problems with the property because of water, had nowhere to, it got intercepted and blocked and dammed. And so there are a lot of these isolated wetlands now that, that were essentially man-made. But the, the soils around where the, in the pockets of development, the test pits for the septics were gravelly material, well-drained, pretty good material. But we do have these pockets here and there where there are wetlands all over the property. We tried to work with that as best we could in the two site designs and, and come up with the best, the best alternative. We met the intent of the original subdivision. The original cluster had trails and other things that we had. We wanted to preserve those because there were people in the development now that lived there that bought into the development with those trails as part of the development. So we couldn't really push too far and, and block those, those trails because that would be inconsistent with the, the previous approvals. So we really spent quite a bit of time looking at the design of each lot and, and making sure that we, we did the best we could to, to, to meet the fifty foot setback. But it was, we couldn't do it everywhere just because of the way the original project was designed. So that's what prompted it. We've been through the Conservation Commission, been through technical review committee meetings, addressed their concerns. The, the, the city has made recommendations, don't have any problems with those. The, the conditions of approval, and this just may be the way it's normally done, but A, talks about a site-specific and a wetlands permit. We don't need either of those. The only permit that we need is the septic design. So...
And it was the redesign of the septic that led to the discovery of the buffer incru- incru- incursions, right?
Right, right, because the, the well, the septic designs that were approved expired, so we needed to do new ones.
Now, when you say they expired, did they need to be updated or simply do a new approval process?
Uh, septic designs only, the state's approval is only good for four years. And they were approved in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, so they had expired and prompted new ones. And that prompted a review of the town's regulations, just to make sure something hadn't changed and...
Did you have to go back to test pits and all that?
Uh, we did, yeah, in this case. The, the original subdivision was done by Paul Darbisher. But the, the state also has a general rule that the test pit shouldn't be more than four, uh, five years old, so...
Well, aquifers can change, and I think that's a concern about. If this rain never stops.
Yes.
Right. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, where, where everything had to be redone, and you said something about you had to resize the houses. Does that mean you had to reduce the amount of bedrooms?
Uh, no, we didn't have to reduce the number of bedrooms, but the, the developer that is gonna build the houses today has just chosen a different house. The, the original developer had a large colonial, attached two-car garage and the, the current developer has a different idea for the development, feels it's, that there's a better plan. His houses just happen to be smaller, which really helped us out in, in, in saving as much of the buffer from the thirty to the fifty as we could.
So all the houses are still the same amount of bedrooms, so the septic system has to be for that amount of bedrooms?
Correct.
And you haven't got that approval yet?
Uh, we haven't, because we didn't, we weren't sure if anything was, you know, if you guys want something moved, then we would have to go back to the, back, so.
Oh, is, is that part of the conditions?
Yes, the conditions will require them to get their, their permits before they, they proceed, yep.
Yeah. And do you know how many bedrooms are in each house?
Yes. Yeah, the, the septic designs are pretty much done, and the only reason that they're, they're done. The only reason I haven't submitted them is, we, we've already moved them once for, in, in talking with the Conservation Commission. You know, they made some recommendations, so we moved things around for them. And then I decided, well, I'm just gonna wait to submit them, just to make sure we're not moving anything around again.
I just, it's not a major concern, but I can see that all the piping going from each house is a long run, and they're going on the driveways.
Yeah. Yeah, that's how they was originally designed.
Is there gonna be protection for those?
Uh, you insulate them? Yeah, you use two-inch rigid insulation underneath the, the driveways. You put a, it's like a doghouse.
Right.
It's been tested at the cold weather lab here in New Hampshire, and if you do it that way, it's, it's very successful.
So is there intent to put everything in the septic system?
Yes, they have shared...
All at once, or when each, because in order to have it approved, you have to build all four houses, correct?
Uh, no, they will give you a staged approval, so the entire leach field will be put in
Right.
for all four houses. And you can, you can do one at a time, and they give you a staged approval. That needs to be continually updated every time you add a structure. But they will give you backfill approval and they will give you a stepped approval.
I'm confused. Did you say four houses or seven?
Uh, seven total. There are two, there's three in this pod.
Oh, I see. Mr. Brown was asking you about the septic design there, yeah.
Right, so all four of these share one leach field here, and all three of these share one leach field down.
So you changed, the architectural style has changed and it changed the footprint a little?
Yeah.
And then you adjusted the footprints to try to minimize the impacts on the buffers, right?
Exactly, yep.
Well, hopefully there's no, like, ledge underneath those little corners, right? That would, yeah, well, that's what test pits are for.
Right.
I guess. Well, that's seven McMansions that will get built, and that's probably a good thing. Any other questions for the application? Those big colonials out in the middle of the woods, it always...
Really?
Yeah.
The only question, I just have one more quick question.
Sure.
With the, with all these pipes going all through all these, so are these gonna be part of a homeowner's association?
Yeah, there's already, because it was approved in two thousand and four and some of the units were already built, there's already homeowners association documents put in place that address the utilities.
So they all have right of ways?
They all have common rights over everybody else's property. It, it's a condominium and a homeowners association, so it's a lot of open space, but the individual, each individual person has a right to access the septic and maintain their sewer line. That's all in the homeowners documents we submitted to the city.
So in other words, if the septic system fails, they all pay?
Correct. So homeowners, yeah.
It's the American way.
Yeah, well.
Yes.
Hope the documents are clear on that.
Well, it sounds like the original setup, but for these technical changes, was done pretty well, so.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't see any problems going through.
The concept, at least, was enacted incredibly. Any other questions? Okay, seven oh six, we're gonna open up for a public hearing now. Are there any butters here that would like to address this application? This is Trail Haven, Barbara Boulevard. It's a cluster subdivision. Yes, please come on up to the microphone and, and identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Eric Van Steinsberg. I'm the homeowner of ninety-eight Barbara Boulevard, which is, I believe, the last home before the north phase of this project. The city has sort of taken a precedent of a hands-off approach to Barbara Boulevard all throughout the years. The bottom section is paved up to a certain point, but the upper section of the road is not. It has actually fallen into quite deplorable condition despite any innovation or whatever we need to do here to to have the drainage changed and switched off, which I know a lot of the work has been done. But in speaking with my immediate next-door neighbor today, the question is, what does the city plan on doing as far as the road itself? We don't have anything from the city as far as snow removal taking place. The potholes, especially up at the top section, they're at the point now of where you have possibilities of vehicle damage. We're gonna be running more construction vehicles down the road. What happens if we need to have fire, police down in our area? So we're kind of in a spot of wondering, where is all the tax money going to go, and are we gonna see any improvements for saying, yes, no problem? We don't have any issue with making these changes that are proposed here.
Good question. Will you show, could you show us on the map?
On the map.
Uh, what, what stre- stretch of road you're talking about?
Okay.
And where your house is?
Okay, my house is actually right here, so there's a wetland, which is a clear area that's a pit down in between my driveway and then these are the four of, this is the north section here, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So this section here, where Joanne Terrace loops back into Barbara Boulevard, this is all a dirt, essentially unmaintained road. This area here, by one of the original developers of the property, had made this a paved area that comes down here. The accessway in and out, again, is in, it's in deplorable condition, to say the least. We have funded out of our own pockets in a non-association setting because we have none of our neighbors, nobody I've spoken with has any desire to become association. We have not signed any paperwork to that effect, and we do not pay any type of dues. We do not maintain or hold any type of regular meetings. We pitch into a fund that's strictly voluntary for our own snow plowing and snow removal. And to the best of my knowledge, the last spot where there is a place for fire hydrant or water plum down is actually right here by where our mailboxes are.
So you have a community mailbox?
Yes, for the two homes, so it's... My home is right here, and my neighbor, who he actually built both homes at the same time. We have one leach field that we share. We have independent septics with one leach field. But we have just, our two mailboxes are right there.
So you're directly, you're directly above the, the cluster that we're talking about right now?
Of Trail Haven North, yes.
Okay, and are you part of that homeowners association?
We are not an association.
Okay.
We did not sign any documentation that would denote an association. When I was at the closing table for the purchase of my home, one of the questions I specifically asked was, is this an association? Because I did not wanna have anything to do with an association. We were told no. Like I said, we hold no meetings. We do nothing that would denote any type of formal association. We don't have newsletters. There's no communication other than just friendly chit-chat between the neighbors.
And there's nothing in your deed?
Nothing.
Okay.
So, and then the other part of it is our trash removal. We have to bring our trash up to Country Club.
I'm familiar with this area. I've always wondered what they were thinking when they designed Barbara Boulevard.
So, and that's a thing. We have nine homes that are affected right now by all of these things because they're the nine existing homes that are already there, between the upper part of Barbara Boulevard and the Trail Haven. The, uh, which is, well, we're part of the Trail Haven portion, I'm assuming. Um, so we're talking now, we're gonna add seven more homes to that, which is more wear and tear on the road system. Now, what are we gonna do? Every Friday, we have a giant garbage pile sitting up by Country Club Road.
Name, right, is it Van Steinberg?
Van Steinsberg.
Van Steinsberg, okay.
And I am, nothing personal with the developer or any of those things, but we pay a lot of tax money to the city, and we receive no services for it.
And I think the question is really, what portion, if any, of these roads are public roads, are, are city roads?
And this is where I'm saying, the, the city of Laconia has taken sort of a hands-off approach and set the precedent of not having any...
I don't know if that's necessarily so, but there's a process for the acceptance of roads. And this area was developed in fits and starts over so many different times. It might have been, part of it might have been approved and part of it not, so.
I mean, the, the city...
Ask the applicant's representative to, if he can weigh in on that.
The, the city definitely recognizes Barbara Boulevard. It's on the tax map. There's a street sign there.
Okay.
But there is definitely no semblance of, of ownership of any kind of that road.
So it's not approved, a city-approved street?
It's in limbo, as far as, as far as I know.
It would not be, it would be maintained if it was a city-approved street.
It should be, yes. Uh, because even, even in this...
Can you find out what part is hot top and what part is dirt?
So, the Country Club Road is out here. Barbara Boulevard starts here, and this is dirt all the way down to this part here. Joanne Terrace comes off of Country Club also, and this creates a horseshoe loop.
And that's all dirt?
That's all dirt. And so this part here and down is paved. There is no other access in or out of this area other than to use one of these two.
So do you know how that, if you bought in, was it paved when you bought in?
This section was, yes, and this section was not.
So the middle section was paved, the interior, but not the two access?
Just the lower section.
Just the lower section.
Yeah, so there is no, no other way in or out other than to be on an unmaintained road on, on either side of Joanne Terrace or the, the upper part of Barbara Boulevard.
Any questions for him before I go back to the...
No, I've, I've, not for him. I, I, I thought I heard somewhere in this discussion condo and association.
I, I did too, and, and that's not the case.
So I, I guess I need some more clarity now.
Yeah, I asked that question, and it was a yes.
Yeah. Discussing that whole pipes thing.
Right.
Okay.
Is it possible you're a part of it and you don't know you're part of it?
I don't think so. I, I very clearly asked that question before I signed closing documents on my home. Um, I'm originally from southbound in the area, and I, I don't wanna have anything to really do with associations, rules, dues, and, and things of that sort.
Okay.
All righty.
So.
All right, well, if you'd be care to sit down for a second, we'll ask, uh...
I have a friend in the club, Zach.
My name's Eric.
Hi, Eric.
Sure, I, I can address a few things. And I'm not sure, I can, I, I know that Barbara Boulevard extension, which is just part of, part of this development, the original portion that's gravel was, was there. It was an existing road, and I believe it's a city street, but I don't know that for sure.
All the way out to Country Club Road?
Uh, from, from this intersection out, I believe it's, it's a, um...
The city gravel road.
It's a city gravel road. The, from that point in, it's private, and it's owned by the homeowners association, which is recorded to Registry of Deeds. So, um, and those, those deeds are in place, and I'm, I'm, I'm... We have a new developer now. The original developer of this project has, has sold it to the current owners. And I, I can't really speak to what they, what they told the people that they sold to, but there is a homeowners association in place. As I recorded, we provided documents to the, to the city. And we actually used the, the deed for those two lots to, to make sure that everything was done correctly, and, and it is. So it is in the deed for the homeowners association. And the homeowners association owns the, the road and the responsibility to maintain just the paved portion of Barbara Boulevard, which was part of this development, and that's all in the condominium documents for the development. So those are, those are all in place. It seems like, uh, single, so it's a homeowners association?
Homeowners Association owns the roads. The lots are owned by the individuals.
Right, right, so, um...
Excuse me, how many units originally were in this subdivision?
It was in two phases, so this is, this is this entire phase. This is Trail Haven North, which is a separate homeowners association to Trail Haven South.
Okay, and that was total, how many units?
Uh, what was Trail Haven South?
No, just the north section that we're talking about.
Yeah, um, this section is originally twelve.
Okay.
And, and this...
Nine, I'm sorry, nine.
In north, in, is he in Trail Haven North?
Yes, so all these lots are in Trail Haven North. So the, the upside to this, well, first, and, you know, I can't speak to the gravel portion of Barbara Boulevard because it's not part of this development. I, I do believe it is a city street. So that would be something to talk to the city about. But the good, the upside to this is when these lots get developed, there's gonna be more people and more money available to make improvements and maintain and plow. You're kind of dividing it up amongst more people, but unfortunately, it is a homeowners association. And that's how the development was set up, and those are all legal documents that are recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And all the land was transferred into those homeowners association, the open space, the roads, the, the, the cistern. They're all listed in there.
So who's in charge at the homeowners association if this gentleman doesn't know anything about it?
Right, well, the original developer should have made sure everybody was aware of it. And, and the original developer, up until this August, I think, when the new owner took possession, was the majority landowner and should have been participating in whatever maintenance had to take place. Apparently, that was not occurring.
No, we actually, on a routine basis, had to wait for that, that portion of our handshake agreement being, going to participate in any way.
So, um, you know, to move it forward now, I think we have new people in, in place, but, but we have a big road here that needs to be maintained, and the more people we get on there, the more, we're gonna divide the cost of this amongst more people. And there is an obligation for everybody to participate, so. The people that move in here will need to, to be made aware that they need to participate in the maintenance of this road because it's their road, so.
So I think the question of the other gentleman is, what's going to happen prior to all this new building? Am I correct?
Yeah, ideally...
Just so like, you know, the regular maintenance?
Some type of plan in place for a future development of this. I mean, ideally, it would be nice if the city agreed that, yes, we own the upper part of this road. We would be happy to pave it and provide maintenance to even their portion. If there's a dispute about the lower part of it being private, that's fine. My neighbor is good enough that we take care of plowing it ourselves. It costs out of our own pocket, his own pocket more so than mine. But there should be something in place.
Which, which portion of this road's in Guilford?
There is no portion.
None of this is in Guilford?
That's not true. The first fifty or so feet of both of those roads are in Guilford.
Okay.
Right, yeah, the town line is parallel to, looks according to this, the Country Club Road.
They start, they start...
They start in Guilford.
Immediately go until...
And that might explain why the city doesn't.
That is part of the reason. If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, please, sir.
I have had several discussions with DPW about this subdivision. And the, the city does not maintain these roads because they are private roads.
Okay.
They were intended to be private originally, and they are private, and the city has no intention of accepting them. Now, this is not to say that the homeowners can't petition to do something with the city council to improve the road and then have it accepted. And I, I'm not ruling out that possibility, but I'm just saying that at this point in time, absence... Absence some type of of formal action by the homeowners, they are going to remain private. And part of the reason is for the, for the reason we just discussed, and that is where the town line is. In order for the city trucks to cross that section of Country Club Road. To get to those streets that are in Laconia would require an intermunicipal agreement. And I don't know what we have for Country Club Road at the present, but it does not include Joanne Terrace, and it does not include Barbara Boulevard. So there was, there's a lot of moving parts here, but I'm looking at the condo, the homeowners' association docs from two thousand eleven. And. I I I believe they support now, just because the abutter was told at closing that there was no homeowners' association. Does not make it so. And because of the fact that this property has been through various proceedings. Different people are involved. I, you know, I can't, I am not responsible, and neither is the board or the city responsible for what. Representations of the then-owner of the property made at that time, we are not responsible for that.
Right. Did you follow that? Mr. Vin?
Yes, I do, I I I do follow, I mean, for an association to exist, I believe that there have to be officers. Meetings held on a routine basis and and a whole bunch of other criteria that are not met.
You, you may have a point there, and I think the other thing is that this isn't the, the planning board can't do anything about the acceptance of the road. Your original question is, you know, I'm a taxpayer, what is the city of Laconia? I think the answer from our staff tonight is nothing. City of Laconia is not doing anything to maintain those roads because the city of Laconia considers them private and not accepted as city streets. So, there is a process for that, there's also a process um for determining whether or not. Your uh purchase of the property was conducted properly, and that's something that's way beyond the ken of this group. And for which you probably need to retain counsel, um because you may find yourself in a position to wanna pursue. Why was I told this when I, you know, when this wasn't so, but we can't resolve that tonight, none of that.
Nor am I looking before you two. These are some of the concerns that that were being raised, I mean, this is the point of having the abutter given the chance to write this.
Right, well, and that's exactly, that's why we, you educated the board about Barbara Boulevard in a way that um. We probably wouldn't have been educated.
There's some large gray areas.
Well, and I, as I said to my vice chair earlier, um privately, I said, I'm always troubled. When you have a development that has paved roads, but you have to have unpaved roads access to it, it seems counterproductive. Because part of the thing, part of the reason that there are planning boards is to promote orderly development. And improve city infrastructure wherever we can, uh hopefully um in a way that that's fair to everybody, so. Mr. Broden, did you have a question?
Well, I I had a sort of a question, part of it got answered, but um to try to answer a little bit more into the depth of your question. If the representative of the uh new owner, um have you met this new owner?
No, I have not personally.
Could you tell us why that has not happened?
You know, this, this all came about pretty quickly, I was definitely gonna meet tonight, um uh because the owners are here with us tonight, all of them. So I hope that everybody will stick around and meet so we can kind of talk this through. This is the first, you know, thi- this all kind of came out a total surprise, the 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 current owner thought they were gonna go get building permits. And start building and and would have had half these houses built by now, um so this, we've been really kind of um backtracking, so.
We weren't told there wasn't a homeowners' association, were you?
No. No, well.
Hi, my name's Emile Busier, I'm one of the owners of the principal uh developer in this project. And I actually did contact his neighbor some time ago when we were looking at this property, we had plans to build this out. And I recognize there was an issue with the homeowners' association, there are two homeowners' association documents that are of record. And I can completely understand how someone can go to a closing and be under the impression there is no homeowners' association. Because the average person isn't going to go through the Registry of Dees and try to find out what's of record and what's burning his lot. And to his surprise tonight, he's probably finding out that there is actually some covenants and declarations that create a homeowners' association. That says that you and your neighbors are going to be responsible for maintaining the roads. I understood that his neighbor, like he said, was the person that took it upon himself to plow the roads, maintain the roads within the association. So I talked to him originally, thinking that I wanted to get together and have a meeting and try to get this thing set up. So that all the neighbors that would participate in maintaining the private road that is out there right now could all be on the same page, create a budget. And do something that would have a little more orderly fashion than just his neighbor doing all the work to go ahead and, you know, plow and maintain the roads. And talk to him once in a while so he can have a few dollars. That all got put on a back burner once we found out about the issue with the setbacks. In the, or the increased buffer zone, so we didn't do a lot moving forward. And then as we proceeded through this process, we said, well, obviously, there's not gonna be a lot to do until we can get over this one hurdle right now. And see if we can get the conditional use permit, so that's what we're hoping to do, and I intended, once we obtained our hopeful approval here tonight, which we hoped to have occurred last month. But there was a defect in the abutter notice, uh that we couldn't move that process forward, at least making some contact with the other homeowners within the association. Once we had the approval, but it didn't seem like a good use of our time at that point when we didn't know where this was all going. So I'd be hopeful that, once we get our approval, I can meet one of our neighbors tonight, say hello, and talk about setting up a meeting with his neighbor as well. And see if we can do something to put this together in a more orderly fashion, but there certainly is a homeowners' association that's responsible for maintaining this road.
Why we have public hearings, it's why we, we require you guys to spend the money to notify the abutters and.
Well, in addition, just to point something else out, there was a notation about, there was a comment made early about this being a condominium, you know, this is not a condominium development. These are single lots, he owns his lot, there's seven more lots that we purchased, there's a couple of lots that are owned by other individuals. But there's shared amenities, so people might get confused about the use of the word condominium.
Development with certain common amenities and common responsibilities.
Exactly.
All right, thank you, Mr. Busier, any questions for the owner?
Other than the lots that are there, how many more acres are part of this cluster zone, do you know?
There's all kinds of open space that extends all the way back through here, which is consisted of a bunch of trails that will never be developed, those all part of the original. And it was a planned urban development is what they put it through as back. Some time ago.
So in total, uh you said there's two associations set up?
Well, it was created up, it was created as Trail Haven North and Trail Haven South, each had their own declaration to maintain the roads that the house, that their houses are built along. But my intent is to have one common group that's going to be all together, sharing the cost of the roads and the deck, and the. What happens actually is that the, the group that's closer to the access road, they only have the obligation to share the costs. Together with the further group out of the road, like I, I'm not telling you the exact limitations, I don't know as I'm standing here, but closer to the accessway. And the group that consists of these lots moving out here, they have their own obligation to take care of this. That's the way the documents were drafted and approved.
Probably, probably because there were existing lots at the time, and they wanted to it, to be acceptable to the current owners or something.
I'm just curious what the uh, what the current plan is for, for that road in completion of this, the rest of that subdivision. You guys plan to do anything to it, or just?
I can, I can honestly say that one of the considerations that we had was to talk to the homeowners along the extension of Barbara Boulevard. To see what it would cost to put a top coat on along there, make, make one, they make the Barbara Boulevard exit a paved, complete road. But that's not something that I'm prepared to commit to to this board, but it's something that we're seriously considering.
Well, but if you're gonna be doing site work in there, you're gonna need a road that will be able to withstand the, the weight of construction vehicles, right?
You would, yes.
And you're gonna be using Barbara Boulevard or Joanne Terrace as access?
Probably Barbara Boulevard, I would imagine. But as far as I know right now, the, the infrastructure there will support construction vehicles traveling back and forth.
I, I don't know, I'm asking.
No, and I mean, in as far as any ideas about paving down the road, that would be somewhere down the road, if we can get some cooperation with some other neighbors that aren't part of Trail Haven North and South.
Well, and as, as your representative rip uh pointed out, the more units that are involved, the more units that are sold. The more members uh of the association, the, the less the share is for everything, so.
Well, these are all plans that we were talking about when we got involved and purchased the property, only to have our balloon deflated a little bit, once we found out we had these other issues we had to deal with, so.
We're fresh out of helium tonight, so.
So, I I I'll just interject a couple of questions here, I've, I've owned homes in Laconia in cluster zone. Similar to this, but in in a bigger mass, it it's, it was their intent when they did it, what I bought into those developments. If there was fifteen homes, if they're not developed, the responsibility lies on the developer, not, not the three people that still live there.
No, and I can, I can completely sympathize with that, because when we purchased this, I I understood from talking to our abutter's neighbor that's not here tonight. That he was pretty miffed over the fact that our predecessor was someone that they had to go knocking on the door to, to get any kind of contribution.
Right, so with what?
Kind of neighbor that we intend to be.
It still should be divided by fifteen different lots, not the three people that are living there.
Well, and that's.
Well, and that's correct, and I think that Tanya Hiltz, who was our predecessor, she wa- she actually did make some contributions to some extent. But I'm not really sure if she was paying, kind of an overused word, her fair share.
Okay, but I think, and now I'm following, I'm picking up what you're putting down. So if there's fifteen units in a development, then it's a one fifteen share, and if the developer owns fourteen of them. Then the developer pays fourteen of, out of fifteen, and the abutter pays the one, right? In theory, I guess.
If that's what it was, that's what it would be, yeah.
Yeah, but it doesn't seem like that's happening.
Homeowners' issue.
Is that correct?
That has not been, I I understood that's exactly not how it was working before.
We're just trying to get a whole picture of this, to protect new owners and present owners, that's all.
Oh, well understood, and I'm agreeing with everything that you're saying.
And we're straying a little bit. But it's, it's an intriguing problem, I think, for the abutter and the, and the owner, uh the new owner. But um I thank you for answering um the board's questions, are there any more questions for the owner? Mr. Busier? All right, um, all right, do you have anything else you wanna say on the record for today?
No, I don't, just appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, thank you.
So we can come back to you at the end, is there anybody else, um any other abutters here, come on up?
Good evening.
Hi.
My name's Sean Mulligan, I'm a member of the Trail Haven South, the other section of it. You were just, I didn't want to interrupt the conversation, but there was a lot that could have been added.
This is your turn.
Yeah, and a lot to address, you kind of covered so much, I don't wanna rehash a whole lot, but the questions we would want you to consider. Some things we'd want to consider, and I might get some feedback from back here. But what you were discussing about upper, there's Barbara Boulevard, there's a section of it that leads to us, we are on Colby Court. It goes off of Barbara Boulevard at the top. Not good with maps.
Right in the center, right in the center, yeah, that's Colby right there, yeah.
And down in there, we had six slots, which are now five, um but. We do participate in the cost of plowing Barbara Boulevard, at least as far as Colby Court. So, and there is a homeowners' association, we do have meetings, we do have dues, it is a little bit loose, as a lot of associations you'll find around. But what we wanna have considered is by the town of the city, um also for yourself. With the construction going on in, it will kind of degrade what's going on in there, we'll have, that we're gonna have to be participating in what's going on below us. In an association that isn't necessarily us. When we were all sold our properties, we all know, we were not quite sold a good bill of goods. We were told, yes, and when all this is sold, and it's all said and done, then the city will, it'll all become, then the city will take over. The city did indeed, at one point, plow Barbara Boulevard for, and I understand you have some kind of criterion, thirty years makes it yours. I think you bailed at twenty-eight or something to that effect, good call. But as I, there are houses that have been down there significantly longer than thirty years, and you were plowing for them. You did leave, so your actual obligation, I believe, isn't there, but had to consider doing the properties, allowing development to happen down there. I would think you should at least be taking into consideration what you're doing to people who are already there. This poor gentleman might have got sold the same bill of goods we did, I'm not sure, it's just never been clear. If um, and maybe I don't have to make you take this personally, I don't know how long all of you have been on the board. But I think Ms. Hiltz sold you a bill of goods and got you to, I'm surprised a lot of this is here. Has gone this far by your allowing this to be developed. And when you say that Barbara Boulevard is in Laconia, maybe I should pay a little bit more attention where the borders are, but. And you say you have uh, you have to cross over into um Guilford and all that. Your garbage trucks come in, or at least our garbage is picked up at the end of Barbara Boulevard, I don't know what part of it isn't Laconia.
Well, the first fifty feet off, off um Country Club Road is Guilford. Country Club Lo- Road is, is in Guilford.
All of it, I'm in Barbara Boulevard?
Stretch, according to this plan, the, the town line is.
I don't know that a border delineated on the map, so.
And it's almost irrelevant there, I'm just saying that we do.
Very relevant to public works, though.
Yeah, it is, um but as I said, we were sold a bill of goods, I'm gonna say maybe you were too. Maybe you didn't do your due diligence when you approved and let everything go loose in there, seems like the whole situation, it has been a little bit loosey-goosey. We're kind of picking up the pieces as far as what we're doing, we started to incorporate doing it. One thing we've said to the lower part of Barbara Boulevard is, you know, not to be flip, but, you know, if we don't pay for it. What do you do, not plow it, because you gotta get home, we're not being that way. But it is, it's left the door open for people to be jerks, um and we don't wanna be that way. I'm sorry we haven't got to meet our new neighbors, um other than by way of mail and come on down and talk about it.
Well, that was your engraved invitation, was the abutter's notice.
Yeah, and and um considering we're gonna all be working together, we'd like to do it well, but. As you make your decisions, I'd like you to kind of maybe, uh no offense, but clean it up a little bit better and handle it a little bit better than it was before. And just, it really has gotten to a point where it shouldn't have gotten to, by way of your actions.
Well, I just.
Sorry.
And not, most of us weren't on the board probably when the original development.
Then it's not personal.
But, but by way of clarification, for no other reason. What the planning board does is, is allow people to develop land, we don't develop it. We don't commit city resources to it, we don't, we don't require anybody but the developer to uh spend money on it. So if we make an approval and we, with the expectation that the developer is gonna fully develop the property according to our approval, that's great. But if it hasn't happened that way, and nobody reports it, or even if they do report it, there's precious little the planning board can do about it. We can't undo the approval that we've already given the homeowner. And it sounds like there's a new property owner that in the development to your north, to the north.
And my guess is they're going to wanna do well by what they're doing, because they're gonna have properties down there. And want to sell them and make them marketable and make a good presentation, I'm certain that's what they're all about.
And if they do that.
Benefit us too.
And if they do that, they could, in theory, increase the value of the properties that abut it, and I think that's.
And we appreciate that fact.
Give notice to abutters is not only uh so that they might be aware of any adverse effect. Uh that they also could anticipate some positive effect on the neighborhood.
And we do see that positive effect.
People that live in an area, the more uh, the more need there is for the public to be involved in improving the infrastructure. It's really that simple, so development is really the only thing that funds the, the improving of the infrastructure.
I'm not kind of holding you accountable to, we, you owe a sister that, because you don't, and we know it, but the. Yeah, and that's kind of the one thing that's always just been stuck in our craw, is who owns Barbara Boulevard? And for the developers to tell us, um the original, well, we looked into it, we don't, the city does. And then we come to the city and they go, we don't, and nobody, but nobody can say who owns Barbara Boulevard. That strip of dirt going down through there, not deeded, not owned, I find that to be. I find that to be an absolute miracle, that seriously, with the deeding and searches and everything that's done in the transition and transference of properties, that somehow that all got by everything.
Well, I would.
A stretch of land that nobody owns, it's a miracle.
Somebody owns it, because if somebody owned the land when it was built, and all the.
We've tried, honest to God, we really have.
When you build a road, you created a right-of-way across somebody's land.
We've tried.
Really?
Everybody in denial. Nobody owns the road.
Well, you know what, maybe tonight everyone can, this would be the beginning of a new.
It's just.
Redefinition of the neighborhood. I mean, it's seriously.
It's just interesting.
Sure it is.
That nobody owns the property, the road.
I just have one quick question.
Yeah.
You live on this street yet?
Colby Court, yes.
And you live way up there? Where are you getting your mail?
Our mail actually gets brought into, into Colby Court. There's a little van of boxes.
Not individual houses?
No.
You don't have individual houses? Mailboxes in front of your house?
Right, I never received an explanation as to why that was.
I get that acclamation when I moved in a development. It's a private road. The US mail is not allowed to go in a private road.
They do.
Only if it's in a one section of the development, in a box or a house, and that's it. That's all they, they're allowed to go in. They're not allowed to trespass in a private property. That's what I was told by the US government.
Yeah, I mean, we can bring up Southtown again as an example, where the US mail.
Just comes to one location.
No, they go to multiple, multiple locations.
Yeah, but not individual houses. They don't have a mailbox in front of everybody's house.
There's some of the individual homes.
It might have been just a matter of convenience for us, our little cul-de-sac.
Yeah, it might have been convenient, but that's what I was told. Any private development, the US Post Office only allows them to come in to one location, one location only.
And I know that my mortgage company did require a deed and title search, and they turned up, didn't turn anything up.
Wow.
So, like I said, just putting it on the table.
Sure.
A lot, what a lot of us having bought into are just saying, this was probably not handled as well as it could have been down the pike. As we go forward, something to consider. That's it.
Well.
And, yes, we will come back and petition the city at some point, saying, you know, we all seem to be paying, relatively speaking, the same tax dollars that the person up the street who gets their garbage picked up and their drives plowed, whatnot. We don't see any discrepancy in our tax rate as compared to those, and we've done the comparisons, but that's not your job, so. Thanks for.
These are all good points. Are there any more questions for Mr. Mulligan?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mulligan. Thank you very much. Are there any other abutters here this evening who'd like to speak on this application? Any members of the public? Anyone? Any members of the public? All right, I guess that's it. Seven forty-three will close the public hearing. Staff?
So, we covered a lot, we covered a lot of ground here, but I would.
Postal regulations, Dean, I told you they'd come up.
Yeah, they're not the purview of this board, and I don't know what the Post Office's policy is, and it's not relevant.
You just learned tonight.
So, I also want to bring the board back to the original question, which is not the subdivision, it is a conditional use permit to encroach into the current fifty-foot buffer, but not to encroach into the previous thirty-foot buffer.
Yes.
But having said that, as I'm going through all these documents, this is the, this is the notice of action, i.e., this is the official documentation that documents what the planning board approved in July ninth, two thousand and three, for the conditional use permit. Talks about, describes the, the two roads. And it's plainly, where is it here? No, back here. Anyway, I lost it. But anyway, talks about that the roads will be constructed, and they will be private, and they will be maintained by the association. And I, again, I'll go back to what I said earlier about previous owners, stuff happens, stuff has happened, there's no question. But there is an active homeowners' association for the Colby Court, which is Trail Haven South. And the intention here is to create Trail Haven North Homeowners' Association as well. And then they will, the two associations will have to either merge, or will have to work together to figure out what they're going to do about the roads as they are private. But again, I want to bring you back to the conditional use permit, which is strictly about the wetland buffers. You have the staff review of the justification for the conditional use permits, and then the staff recommendations of the conditions. They are pretty much what has been described by the applicant in terms of, they are maintaining the thirty-foot buffers, and we're practical, they have maintained the fifty-foot buffer as well, but they are encroaching somewhat several feet to twelve feet in a couple of occasions into the fifty-foot buffer. And that's what the CUP request is for.
Okay. So, again, as the board and the public understand, the issue is the encroachment into the buffers, it's not the approval of the cluster. Looking for that. Are there any questions for staff on this? All right, does anyone want to make a motion, even if we're going to have further discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve PL two zero one eight dash zero zero eight nine CUP, the wetland buffer for Trail Haven, accepting all of the staff recommendations, as is.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Mulligan, a second by Mr. Boney. Is there any other discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor of granting the conditional use permit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. In opposition. It's been approved. Thank you. Thank the public for coming.
I do appreciate it. Can I make one more comment, please?
You certainly may.
The conditions from the staff included the conditions that we have in place, a slightly specific in wetlands permit, that both engineers says we don't need, so that can just be modified to say, to the extent that it's required, we need to have those in place. Because we're never going to get them, because we don't need them.
Which one are you looking at? Sorry.
Number three, other conditions.
A. The intent of that statement is if you require any permits, then you need to be, otherwise, if you don't require them. Yeah, it's just a standard word. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so you all can get together and talk, and figure out the routes, meet your neighbors. Call that postmaster.
If you have an association meeting tonight.
All right, it looks like we're at, on the agenda nine point one one. This is PL twenty eighteen dash zero zero nine three CUP. Go figure, a wetland buffer, thirty-seven, don't you, don't you love the fact that you've, that the ground has been well trodden this evening? Thirty-seven Leighton Avenue South, proposal to construct new house within the seventy-five-foot wetland buffer. All right, and we'll hear from the applicant.
Is Honny here at least build it a little bit?
Can you put it right up on the board? You would think that by now we'd have holographic trajectories.
Yeah, you think I'd have my own music now?
It's Nicole Roseberry with Ames Associates here to present the application tonight for the Bouchards. Put the existing condition plan up there, although what you have in your packet may be as legible, considering how far away that is. The existing residence is located two and a half feet from a poorly drained wetland that connects to Lake Winnisquam, giving it a seventy-five-foot buffer to that wetland. And that buffer essentially wipes out the building envelope as far as being able to do anything by building permit only, without needing to come to the planning board for a conditional use permit. There is an existing leach field that is partially located within the seventy-five-foot buffer, and a septic tank that is located entirely within that buffer. There's a parking area along Leighton Avenue South, and there's a dock along the waterfront. And the house is very much in need of attention, and reconstruction is obvious if anybody had been out there, had heard about the condition of it. The proposed residence will be located nine and a half feet from the wetland. The proposed residence has been pushed to the south end of the building envelope, although, as I said, that's predominantly covered by the seventy-five-foot wetland buffer. The, there is a proposed expansion of the parking area to access a garage that is part of the, it's attached to the residence via screen porch, breezeway, a sitting area, and then deck. The proposed driveway expansion, as well as what was existing, as per recommendation by Conservation Commission, will be a permeable surface, so pavers or porous asphalt to allow the water to infiltrate, rather than sheeting off toward the wetland. And additionally, the walkways and the proposed patio will all be permeable as well, leaving just the proposed residence as the impervious surface on the lot. There will be stormwater management installed as crushed stone trenches under the drip edges of the roof to infiltrate stormwater. And there will be native vegetation planted within the buffer area, mainly within the area of the removed residence on the northwest corner of the proposed house, and then also on the east side of the residence. We do have shoreland and septic approvals from the state. And all of the things that we've done, we feel improves the situation on the site by getting a little bit further from that wetland, and also creating permeable surfaces to not only limit the amount of impervious footprint that's put onto the lot, but also those permeable surfaces will help infiltrate stormwater, so it has a dual action. We feel that all of these things will help enhance protection of the water quality, especially given that the wetland is connected to the lake.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah. So, you're within two feet of the wetland now?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? So, you're going to move to nine feet?
Mm-hmm.
From the wetland?
Yep.
What's the current size of this house now?
The current size, I'll get a scale.
You're going to remove the existing structure?
Correct.
Build a new one, okay.
Correct.
And you're reorienting it so that it's actually further away from the.
Seven feet away.
So, it's about twenty-two feet deep from the wetland, from north to south. And with the screen porch, it's about forty feet, so about twenty-two by forty.
About eight hundred square feet. New house is how big?
The residence portion is twenty, or thirty-two by thirty-four, a twenty-four by twenty-four garage, and that's separated from the residence by ten feet, so we're twenty. We're about sixty-five feet parallel to the lake. Thirty, as I said, thirty-two feet deep with a twelve-foot deck here.
So, the expansion's about three times larger than the current structure, correct?
Square footage, yes. So, this is.
Yes, there's a four percent increase in impervious surface that, of course, is, includes the hardscape that's permeable. So, but as far as, as surface on the lot that will not allow infiltration of stormwater, we have a four percent increase. So, we haven't reached the twenty percent mark that the state has for requiring stormwater management. We're doing that voluntarily because of the wetland buffer.
The existing house, is that the front of the house going to be the front of the new house for the setback from the waterfront? Within the right, the property?
Yeah, the existing house, I believe, meets the shoreline setback, and the proposed house will as well. So, it meets all building setbacks, it's just, except for the buffer. It's in the buffer.
Any other questions?
And just to state, the septic is actually fairly contemporary, and part of the project is reconstructing it out, further outside. There's only a small corner that is within the buffer. So, again, it's another, it's something else the client is doing. It's a perfectly working septic system. But as part of this, in the consideration of the buffer, they are going to be rebuilding it as far as they can to that southerly lot line.
Is the demolition of the existing structure based on its condition, or based on the desire to build a larger home?
It's definitely the condition of the house.
So, I see that the owner of record is a family trust. What's the history on the use of the property, the recent history?
This, the Bouchards have owned it.
I think it was just in December of nineteen, of, I'm sorry, of two thousand and seventeen, just purchased this last December.
So, they've owned it almost a year, and the prior owners had it.
I think about fourteen or fifteen years, something in that range.
Okay.
Is it presently a year-round home?
No, it's not used.
But it will be.
Yeah, the full-time year-round home.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seven fifty-nine PM, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any abutters here this evening that would like to speak regarding the Leighton Avenue application?
Just, so, I'm not sure if the letters went into record, but they, or to the, okay, that the abutters had written.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and you're right up on the, CUP was very extensive and very well done. Any other, any abutters? Any members of the public? Members of the press? Anybody from the White House Press Corps? All right, sensing none, we will close the public hearing at eight PM. And we will turn to our staff for some enlightenment.
Well, between this board and the zoning board of adjustment, we have like three or four streets in the city that are right along the water that this type of activity is, has been occurring for the past few years and our anticipation is that it will continue going forward.
Fifty, what, a hundred?
In that, and Leighton Avenue, north and south, is one of those streets that obviously runs right along Winnisquam and fifty, sixty, seventy, or whatever years ago, people built camps and those kinds of things and...
And then they couldn't afford to pay the taxes on them.
Well, I don't know about that, but historically, camps were not necessarily built to the highest standards, so it's not unusual for a structure that's a number of years old to be in need of attention. As has been mentioned by the applicant, they are currently two point five feet from the actual white land and under this proposal, they are going to be at least nine and a half feet. And other aspects of the redevelopment of the property will be an improvement for things that will exist in the buffer, i.e. they're doing permeable pavers, moving the leach field, et cetera. So overall, this is a, in the right direction type category. So you have the justification for the conditional use permit on the first page and then the staff recommendations, which are pretty minor on this proposal for this project.
I thought the applicant said that they were going to use the existing septic? That it was modern?
No.
No, they're doing new. They're doing new.
It was in good shape, but they were going to put a new one and move it further away.
Well, it's best that can be done, I suppose. Are any questions for staff?
I have a question. Is there some reason, I know all these other wetlands, CUPs that we've done, the Conservation Commission has had a letter in there, is there some reason why there's not here?
They have addressed it and I think you probably received it last month. This was again, one of those ones where we had messed up on the, on the, on the notification and so we had to delay. But last month, there was a memorandum from the Conservation Commission, two points, applicant should consider using permeable walkways and driveways, which they have incorporated to some degree, and silt socks will be used for erosion control and that is shown on the current plan. So that was there, the extent of their, I know that they have talked about this project on a couple of different occasions, so they're well aware of everything that's going on. And I believe the planting suggestion, because I noticed the, one of the planting is high bush, blueberry, and that's one of the favorites of the Conservation Commission to plant in the wetlands.
They always come back in about five years to check and see how the plantings went?
Well, yeah.
With buckets?
Yeah, yeah, in June, June or July to get those right, to check them out.
Right.
Maple trees for maple syrup.
Yeah. Let's not get too far down that road. Okay, any other questions?
No, I'd just, I'd like to say we move forward on this.
Sure.
I'd say that we accept the PL 2018-0093 CUP, wetland buffer, thirty-seven Leighton Ave., South, for the proposal of a new home within the seventy-five foot wetland buffer.
And staff conditions?
And any staff conditions that were approved.
Is it nine-three or nine-four?
Looks like nine-three on mine.
I got nine-four over here.
And, oop. That's my typo, we'll fix that.
Okay.
Okay, which is it?
It's nine-three.
Nine-three.
Continue, I'm sorry, Dave.
All right, is there a second?
A second, I'll...
Any more discussion on this motion? More to understand it, all right. All those in favor of granting the PL 2018-0093 conditional use permit, it's signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you very much. We like the colored graphics on your display. It is a nice looking plan.
It is.
These are the little things that matter to us.
We'll come inspect them.
Yeah, the blueberries.
On your stuff right there.
Bring a bucket. We have made it all the way to part ten of our agenda this evening, I believe.
Yes, we have.
This is the exciting part of the agenda where we accept application. And this is not, there won't be public hearings for this. So, looks like the first one is PL 2018-0072 SP, nine oh three Union Avenue, it's to construct an eighty-five by eighty-five foot boat storage structure. This is, application was continued from September fourth and it looks like, oh, you're asking for continuance again?
Right, to January eighth.
To January eighth, all right. Is there anyone here to speak towards the continuance or no? All right.
We've talked with the applicant and he's still working out technical issues.
Is this Mr. Bruyard's?
Yes, it is.
Lot across from Irwin Marine?
Correct.
Yeah, that's my neighborhood. All right, so we have, anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue PL 2018-0072 SP, nine oh three Union Ave., construction of an eighty-five by eighty-five boat storage structure until January eighth of 2019.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Brodeus.
Second.
Second by Mr. Broughton. Any discussion on the motion? Sensing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? On a roll. So while we're on this roll, we will turn our attentions to New Hope Drive, PL 2018-0080 SU. And this is a twenty-two lot subdivision which previously approved but expired, and I remember that discussion. It says application to be continued to January eighth at applicant's request.
That's correct, they're in the process of doing some new mapping out there, so they need a little more time to get that all settled.
Okay, understood. Any questions for staff or anyone? All right, would someone care to make a motion?
I make a motion that we move, that let the applicant continue to January eighth on PL 2018-0080 SU, New Hope Drive for proposal of a conventional twenty-two lot subdivision.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Broughton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bellable. Any questions? Any comments? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Another motion passes, you guys are on a roll tonight. I don't see anything here, we've moved on to new business, I don't see anything here under new. And the only thing I see under old...
Yay!
Oh, we're just going to continue it.
He was here early.
Oh my goodness, yeah. How did you end up on old business at the end of the agenda? Zero five zero two zero SU and zero five zero two eight CUP, one ninety-eight Endicott Street North, Weers Beach Village, it's a waiver request for elimination of additional internal sidewalks. Okay, we hear from the patient applicant.
My name's Frank Yerkes, I'm representing the Weers Beach Village Property Owners Association and the developer, Skip Kelly. This project was originally approved on April fifth in two thousand and six and I submitted copies of the original approved plans and...
Did I sign them?
I don't remember.
I was secretary, I think.
Was I here? I don't know.
We were probably both here, Mr. Yerkes.
Just don't bring up Lakoni country quite enough.
I know nothing. You brought it up just now, okay.
The board had a quorum at a meeting on May nineteenth and they voted unanimously not to build the sidewalks. The roads and infrastructure are privately maintained, it's a cluster subdivision, and we're here tonight to request a waiver on building the originally approved sidewalks. And I think there's several board members here as well who would like to speak.
Got a list, all right.
Would you like a little background?
Pardon me?
Would you like a little background?
Absolutely. It does ring a bell.
Yeah, so Weers Beach Village, as Mr. Yerkes indicated, was approved in two thousand and six, it's been in the process of being developed for several years. They are vested, they are, it seems like, I know it's not daily, but it seems like daily I have a building permit or an electrical permit for the project, so they are making great progress out there in terms of building. As part of the original approval, there was requirement for two sets of sidewalks. The first one was along Heliad Road from where the sidewalk currently ends, which is about three or four hundred feet in from Endicott Street. And so the idea was to build sidewalks the rest of the way to their second entrance, which they have constructed. And then, so that requirement remains and no one is asking for any waiver on that requirement, that still remains. So this, so this...
It's interior sidewalk, right?
Right, the second, the second set of sidewalks is, was interior, which is common for cluster type developments, for us to do sidewalks. In this case, it's a little unique in that the requirement was to have stone dust sidewalks as opposed to paved. And my understanding in talking with the developer is that they're a little difficult to maintain in that the weeds like to grow up through them and they become more or less part of the lawn as opposed to being a defined sidewalk over time. So the request...
Roundup sidewalks.
Well, let's hope not, but anyway. So the request, as I understand it, is for, is that the homeowners association has taken a vote and I believe it was unanimous that they do not want the developer to build any more internal sidewalks. But in order for that to come to fruition, you need to grant the waiver for the additional internal sidewalks. Hence the request.
Okay, I understand that.
Right here.
That's all I have, but several people would like to, homeowners would like to speak. I think I should open the public hearing now.
Okay.
It's at eight thirteen PM Eastern Standard Time. Are there any abutters that would like to speak? Any members of the public?
Anybody?
Anybody?
The presidents.
Yeah.
We're all presidents.
Okay.
I have a question.
Come on up and identify yourself and...
My name's Marie Bright, I live at Forty Memory Lane. I was the first one to build there back in two thousand and nine.
Can you tell me your last name again?
Bright, B-R-I-G-H-T.
Thank you.
Marie A. The sidewalks are kind of yucky and we don't use them and we did take a vote and my understanding is you needed to hear from the actual homeowners. Well, we have three of us here, I have a list of people that emailed me that were on the, and there were, I mean, everyone was there, it was a, but, you know, we have enough and we just don't need them. We walk in the street, it's a lovely homeowners association as opposed to the other guy, who was a total disaster, but my other...
See, because of your location on the docket this evening, you got to watch all that, too.
Well, I'm originally from the city underneath and been familiar with politics and city watching, city council meetings, et cetera, and been away for it, so I had a pretty good idea, but I didn't think I'd wind up in the bottom of the barrel.
Right.
But, no, I really, actually enjoyed it, to be honest with you. I have a question though, unrelated to this. We're trying to get a sidewalk on the DW, we're right across from Cumberland, and my understanding is you guys don't have anything to do with it.
DOT.
Just, do you have a name or someone, go right to the...
The Department of Transportation.
Yeah, District Three.
District Three, right?
District Three, they have an office in Guilford.
At the intersection of Country Club Road and eleven A, across the street where that little, the hotel is, right?
Yeah.
There's a DOT office in there?
In Guilford?
Yeah. And that's for the whole region and that's, they'll tell you, that's there right away, that's...
Yeah, that's their road.
We've tried it a couple of times, well, Skip, I should say, has, and so I figured if I could get a petition from, have everyone in the complex...
Yeah.
How do you think my chances?
Oh, I couldn't begin, I don't think anybody in this room can tell you what your chances are. You just want a sidewalk where?
No, we want a crosswalk.
Oh, crosswalk.
Just a crosswalk. Oh, did I? Oh, well.
You said sidewalk, but either way, it's DOT.
Well, you know what I'm, yeah, you know what I meant.
Helipad, any of that, it's there right away.
I mean, it's tough playing Frogger, but if you need a list of any of the names or anything for the sidewalks...
Yeah, if you could submit them, please, that would be great.
That'd be great.
So you guys do not want the current sidewalks?
Well, no.
And would prefer paved?
Well, it would...
Right? No. No. They don't want any more paving.
We don't, we don't, we don't want...
Oh, he's just honest to God.
You're breaking them now, right?
They want crushed shell.
He and I are doing martinis back here and that's it.
No.
Want pavers.
No, we, we really, we don't, I mean, it's such a great community.
I guess the only question I have is that the homeowners association, does it represent all the lots? In other words, there's not a bunch of undeveloped lots in this?
There's only, how many lots are left?
There's fourteen undeveloped lots out of eighty-five.
Okay, so you guys are making decisions for the future owners of those lots as well?
They're on the other side, they won't know the difference.
That's probably what, you know, phase three, that's not developed? Phase one and two are probably...
Yeah, phase one and two are all done.
Phase one, two, and three are developed and we're into phase four.
So is phase one and two a hundred percent sidewalks in?
No. Phase one is partial sidewalks, you can find them among the weeds.
So are the undeveloped lots on the side of the street that does not get the sidewalk in the plans anyway?
No, they're on both sides.
They're on both sides, okay.
They wanted to put them on both sides, but where, my houses, they put them up there and we don't even, it looks terrible. And I, we've tried pulling the weeds out and my neighbor just said maybe we could just rake the rocks and just throw dirt over it, but that's even worse when they mow the lawn and fling the rocks out.
So your intent is to do what?
Just leave, to me, I would just leave them.
Let the grass grow up to it?
Yeah.
If we have lawn people, they can someone take care of it.
You know, they're just, it's not that many, I mean, it's just, it only goes up...
Well, in another week or so, you won't see it anyway because there'll be a snowbank on it.
Won't even take a week, it's try tomorrow night.
Please, please, I'm trying to pretend that it's not here. Well, I thank you, Ms. Bright, that was a very thorough presentation and I'm glad that you were able to join us and I, I'll just say, and I think Mr. Yerkes can confirm this, that I was a big advocate for sidewalks back in the day. The phrase that kept ending up on the front page of the paper was sidewalks to nowhere, remember that? And it was, the simple concept was that if the developers were required to increase our infrastructure at no cost to the taxpayers, then why not? And there were indeed sections of sidewalk that didn't connect, there's some on the boulevard that don't connect up to anything. But now, you see, the thing is, now I read in the paper that this, one of the, actually no, CIP, one of the proposals from DPW was to put a sidewalk or bike lane all the way along the Weers Boulevard. And I remember thinking, hey, wait a minute, maybe, but in this case, certainly, if all the existing homeowners that are in there say we don't want it, you know, that's where you live, that's your home, that's, that's kind of different.
They're happy, yeah.
Well, yes, and I think that as long as that the sidewalk along Heliad Road is not subject to this request, that's, that's fine. Because Heliad Road... That's fine, 'cause Heliad Road, you, you might have heard, Heliad Road might get developed someday.
I'll be dead and gone by then.
Okay.
That'll be my son's problem.
We won't make that part of the application. So, um, now I've completely lost my, uh, train of thought here. Yes, we do need to make a vote on this, and this is.
Need to close the public hearing first.
Oh, yes. The public hearing has been closed at eight twenty P M. Let me just find this. All right. So this is twelve point one, zero five, point zero two, uh, dash zero two zero S U and zero five zero two eight C U P. This is a waiver request for elimination of the additional internal sidewalks. Now, let me just ask, it says additional. That they're not required to maintain existing?
That would be, uh, that's an injury question, interesting question. I had not pondered that. Based on the, uh, homeowners association desire to not maintain them, then it would be at the board's discretion or whether the current ones need to be maintained or, or not. But really, the waiver is to not build additional ones.
Eliminate sidewalks.
Not, not to build additional ones.
Well, because the planning board in two thousand and six had the, you know, the presence of mind to, um, require them to make them out of a permeable material, nature will take over if they don't maintain it, right? So would we want a waiver of the sidewalk requirement with the understanding that they would no longer be required to maintain existing or construct any further?
You could make that part of your motion, yes.
Internal. Set.
I'll just add that most of the property owners do whatever is there that they maintain, even though we have lawn service or whatever. We kinda just do what we need to do to, to make the area look presentable.
Right.
So it's not left unattended, so to speak.
Well, I, I just wanted to be clear that what we were doing here was waiving sidewalks entirely, so that there isn't a question down the road whether all we were waiving was new construction.
Right.
If you've got existing sidewalks there, each of the, if, if this motion passes, I understand it, it would be up to the, the individual lot owners whether they wish to maintain the little strip in front of their, along the road. You're not prohibiting them from doing that, right?
No.
They want to, okay.
Well, the lot, the, uh, the lot, the lots are not owned by the homeowners. It's, the, the lots are, um, considered common land.
Oh, I see. Oh, yes. So it's all, it's condominium?
This is technically a manufactured housing park, even though there are very few manufactured houses in it, but that's a story for another day, but that's all right. So it's technically leased land, but the intention is for the developer to, uh, when he's done, to completely turn everything over to the homeowners association.
Okay. All right. Well, if everyone, if the, if the homeowners have spoken, who are we to, you know, disagree? So would anyone care to make a motion that the sidewalk, uh, requirements, uh, for internal sidewalks in this development be waived?
I make a motion, we waive that requirement with the additional that they don't have to maintain the existing.
Correct. Uh, motion by Mr. Broden. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second it by Mr. Belo. Is there any further discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Another unanimous vote.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you for sticking around. We would have been so lonely without you.
That son will bring coffee.
And, uh, enjoy the, the big storm then that you predicted for us all.
You only got fourteen more homes to go, and then you own the place.
Is there any other business?
Oh, I lost my. And he looks like he's almost ready to finalize the fourteen homes. He's right near the end.
Any other business?
I have a planning board, planning department report.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, please. Would you give us a report?
All right, so I want to remind the board that, uh, we are still looking for a member of the board to, um, volunteer to be the board's representat- represent, representative to the Conservation Commission. So keep that in mind if you wanna add another meeting or two per month to your schedule. We also, we, we also have an opening on the Lake Region Planning Commission. For, where a city is allowed to have three commissioners, and we have one now, again. 'Cause Brandy was, was one, and, uh, she obviously is no longer with the department, so she's, um, not gonna be a commissioner. But we still have another opening for a commissioner, so.
And something we should act on tonight, or?
Uh, I would put it in, put a feather in your bonnet, and then maybe at the next meeting, if someone wants to volunteer, then you could act at that time to.
Well, I've already indicated that I'd be willing to do that.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
If the, uh, uh, just because I did it, you know, back in the day, and I enjoyed the meetings, and, uh, you know, the food was good.
I second his volunteer.
There we go. All right, okay. Fine.
Well, no, because it, it, yeah, I think it's helpful for, uh, members of this board to participate, because there is such a thing as a regional plan, and it's, um, important that we stay in touch. Kalina?
Is that for both or just for the L R P C?
Just for L R P C, thank you. I don't think it would be appropriate for the chair to be a member of the Conservation Commission. Just 'cause, well, yeah, 'cause it would look to applicants like the fix was in if the, if we always sided with them or something.
Okay, all right. Well, that takes one, one, one off my list. Thank you.
Okay. And that's it. I'm done.
You think so?
My wife's gonna kill me anyway. She's not watching. If you're watching on E, I didn't say any of that. It's fake news.
Next Tuesday, the, uh, Master Plan Steering Committee is, is going to meet. This will be the first meeting, um, since, we had adopted the, uh, Master Plan update in, in, in May. Anticipate that we will have several meetings over the course of the next few months to, uh, get going. So any of you would want to attend, you can, more than area.
Who's, who is the chair of that committee?
That would be you.
When did that happen?
As soon as you, as soon as you said you were on it, you were it. Tag your it.
Well, we, we need to talk.
I will guide you.
That we need to talk.
I will guide you. I do, I do all the work.
What time is that meeting?
I, I do all the, uh, that is.
Here, here next Tuesday at six thirty.
Six or six thirty?
Hang on.
Let me get.
Oh, my goodness, that's Thanksgiving week, isn't it?
Yeah.
Six P M, right here.
Yeah.
Master Plan Steering Committee.
And then, uh, one, one more item, um, and it kinda came up tonight in, in one of the applications. Starting probably with the November, uh, not November, oh, boy, January meeting. I'm going to reorganize the staff recommendations document, and.
You mean the one we've been using for like twenty-four years?
Apparently. Uh, my plan is to do the following, to take all of the standard notes and put them into one section, so, and then put the notes and the conditions that are pertinent to that one application up front in, together, so that you will see the five or six or seven hour, I mean, there happen to be on a particular application, that are particular and specific to that application, as opposed to them being intermixed throughout the, uh, document. With your permission, of course. I believe it would be easier for you guys to read.
Less confusing for us.
Less confusing, yeah.
Volunteers here.
And it would highlight the issues.
And I thought you were actually trusting that I would be able to manage this. I didn't even have a cheat sheet tonight.
That's 'cause Rob told me he didn't make you any.
I've been weaned. I desperately needed them the first couple of meetings. Yes, thank you for it. Okay.
That's that.
That's, uh, any, any suggestions or any comments about, I think that's a good idea, actually. That, as long as I can remember, we've used that template. Yeah.
And, and just not, not to scare you, but we also have planning board procedures that we need to revise, really drastically revised, because they are so old that we don't do half the things that are in the quote.
Should I start playing on getting together for lunch with you or something and go over that stuff?
As long as you bring lunch.
I would have to, 'cause I couldn't afford to take you across the street, that's for sure. All right, um, yeah, I, I kinda thought maybe we needed to do a little housekeeping. And maybe during the winter, when there's usually kind of a lull, it would be a good time for us to do all that. Do we have anything big coming down the pipeline that we should? I mean, sure, the, you know, the superhighway on Heliad Road.
Yeah, the two that you, the two that you, the two, the two things that you, uh, delayed to, uh, January are the only
Okay.
real big items that are bubbling.
Okay, that's good.
Did we ever hear back about the Planning Commission, the training for new people on the board?
Uh, no, I'm, we're still working on that.
Okay.
Is that the Planning Commission, or is that the government?
It'll be, it'll be the, uh, uh.
Local government?
Yeah, it's not called that anymore. The, uh, New Hampshire Municipal Association.
Right.
They have a land use, uh,
Panel or something.
Board training, which, um, so it'll be Planning Board, Zoning Board, Conservation Commission, probably Heritage Commission.
Do you guys have the statute books? Do you have any extra statute books?
We probably do.
Well, we just ordered. We should be getting some.
Yeah.
January?
January.
Yeah, we'll all get those, and maybe part of our, uh, discussion about procedures, it would be to maybe put a new packet, a new, um, member packet together. Would that be a good idea?
Well, we, 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 we did that, we did do that as best we could for the, the two or three new members that, that came on board. We, we gave the zoning ordinances and the, the procedures.
I got one.
Exactly, everybody got that. But a lot of that is a little out of date, so it needs to be, um, collectively revised. I mean, you know, this is, this is a group effort, but, um, not only want it to reflect what we actually do.
Right.
But we want, we might wanna consider, particularly when it comes to site plan, uh, the site plan, uh, regulations, that we might wanna consider a few changes that would kinda go along with the goals of the master plan to, uh, facilitate a few things. And I have some ideas on that, but there would be a, that's a joint decision that the, that the board would make.
Right.
Site plan regulations and, uh, the s- s- proceed, you know, standard procedure is, uh, strictly the planning board, that you don't need anybody else's approval to do, to do those.
Any, uh, anything afoot regarding the zoning ordinance? Any changes there?
Yeah. Well, y- yes, the Master Plan Steering Committee will drive.
Drive that.
Probably a substantial number of changes, and just so for the new board members, um, the zoning ordinance changes is a two-step process. You, the, the, the planning board formulates what the changes are, has a public hearing, hopefully approves them, sends them onto the city council for recommendation. City council may or may not have a second public hearing. They usually do, but they don't, it's not requirement, and then the city council has to, because they are, they are an ordinance. The decision on the ordinance update, uh, not only is it the, the actual content and what you're changing, but the question is whether we do a section at a time, or whether we just do all of it. You know, one big fell swoop, and there's pros and cons to, to either one. Sometimes when you just try to do a section, there are references to other sections, and you may have a little bit of a cascading event. So that's the, that's the pro for just do it all at one fell swoop. On the other hand, that's a very arduous task to do, so.
It's a lot of multitasking.
Yeah.
Well, that, but then again, that, that, that engine could be driven by this committee as well, the, the steering committee.
Could.
Because if you're gonna do a global, you might as well have global mission and a, and an eye towards, uh, the big picture.
Yeah.
You know? I've always said that the thing about the city of Laconia is it's never figured out what it wants to be when it grows up. We still have all this, the infrastructure of a industrial city, and that, that train left the station along with the passenger station down here. I mean, it's just not gonna happen. I, uh, my personal belief is that tourism, tourism, tourism is gonna be the growth. Because e-commerce, yeah, there's no way to regulate that anyway, and if that's where the, that's where the, 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 um, the sort of, uh, industrial activity is located, drop shipping and stuff, you know, I mean, we're not manufacturing, we're not gonna be probably creating a whole heck of a lot of new manufacturing jobs over the next ten years in this city.
You know, but a lot of local new businesses by the, you know, people more my age.
Yeah.
That would be great to see more of that.
I guess what I was getting at was that there's, if the infrastructure needs of modern e-based business-ing is pretty slight compared to, well, we gotta have an industrial park, and we need to have access to the highway, and we need to have, you know, heavy duty power and utilities and stuff. We don't need that. Anybody can operate a multimillion dollar business out of their local office if they wish. But I do think that the tourism thing is one, is a, is an economy, or a portion of the economy that the city is inexorably intertwined with. That's like Bike Week, you know? Well, do we own the event? No, we don't own the event. Do we manage it? No, we don't manage it. Well, what do we do with it? We tolerate it? That's silly, isn't it?
And we own the trademark.
Well, yeah, yeah.
What you have to say, Mr. St. Clair.
Oh, he's at the other meeting. Too bad he missed it. No, but I, and, and Charlie will tell you, you know, this is an old question. Bike Week is an old, old question. I was on a committee about once that studied it for weeks and weeks and had public hearings and made recommendations to the city council. And as near as I can tell, absolutely nothing was ever done with it after the report was issued, so. It is, it is a, a lack of vision to some extent, but it's also very, very hard to get all the horses in the barn at the same time, you know? Everybody wants their little bit of pasture land out there, and, um, but I don't know about you, but I think it's vital. And I think at least we ought to have a very clear vision going forward of what we should avoid and what we should promote. And beyond that, we really, it's up to free enterprise. It's up to, like we saw tonight, it's like the property owners and the associations for them to decide their destiny. Okay, anything else? Anything to add? Kalina, do you have anything for us tonight? All right, then, I guess I would entertain a motion to end this meeting.
I make a motion, we adjourn this meeting?
I don't think a second is required for a motion to adjourn at this hour.
This is pretty early.
Just in case, I second it.
Just in case. Yeah, we'd hate to have to reconvene tomorrow morning, right?
That's right.
All right, so, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Cabal down. Thank you.
Shut the cameras off.
Shut the cameras off. Hopefully my wife was not watching. I'm in so much trouble.